Just as a reminder, during the unscheduled audience participation, when your name is called, please come up to the podium and your conversation is with me as the president of the board. Your conversation is not with anyone in the audience, so please don't turn around and start talking to people there. It's also not a dialogue, so you need not ask us any questions. We're not going to answer them. This is your turn to tell us what's on your mind so that we can be jotting notes down and wanting to get through that list of people. So you'll have five minutes. Who has the buzzer?
I do.
Heather, you got it again. So Heather has the buzzer. What she does is that light, there's a yellow light, it'll flash, and that means that you have...
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds left of your five minutes. And then we'll respectfully end. The flash will hit again. We'll thank you for your comments, and we'll ask the next person to please come forward. All right, thank you. First, we have Mark Gillum. Mark Gillum.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and start off where we were at the last meeting when you all said you were gonna vote to unmask the children and then didn't.
Point of order. It's repetitive. We can move on.
I'm the first speaker. I thought I got to say what I wanted.
It's repetitive to our conversation that we've had over and over against masks.
And then you told us that you were gonna hold a meeting today...
Point of order.
And unmask the children.
Hold on.
Excuse me, this is my time. I waited my turn. You can be quiet.
Hold on, we can pause the time clock for a second for Parliament... What's your point, Dan?
My point is, as we discussed masks numerous times, we are in a position right now that it's not appropriate. We've had this discussion, with all due respect.
Were you at the last meeting, sir? I think, weren't you on vacation?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so you wouldn't know you weren't there.
We've had this discussion.
So when does my time start? Because you people lied to us. The first value on the school is trust. We don't trust you anymore. Now we've had catastrophic failures at your watch, and you don't wanna talk about it? You didn't wanna talk about it? You tried to silence us? The president, you actually called the police on me to try and shut me up. But why didn't you call the police when we knew there was a kid with a problem? So I'm curious. And just so the public is clear, every person on this stage is under investigation right now. You don't need a third party. You're already under investigation for your role in this. So you act like you need to bring in a third party to figure out what to do? I think you all need to resign tonight. Every person who was on watch when this happened, because where were you? I think you all should leave. I think you failed the children. We don't trust you anymore, which is your first value of trust. I don't trust you. The kids don't trust you. The parents I talked to don't trust you. You're a preacher, and you lie like it's going out of style. What the hell is that? And then you treat us like we're stupid? You guys have a problem. You have $200 million lawsuits coming at you right now with a whole pile coming more. You're gonna be so busy for the next five to 10 years defending yourself against the atrocities that happen under your watch? You should get out of the way so some competent people can take your place. And then you try to silence the parents so you can continue talking? You know, I went back and listened to our conversation when you kicked me out of your place of business that you had invited all the parents to, and then you called the police on me? I went back and listened to that. You know, it was a really peaceful conversation. You just didn't like the part where you had to give up your immunity in order to protect the children from forced masking. Get the damn masks off the kids. You said you were gonna vote at this meeting. In the last meeting, you said you were gonna vote tonight because you were missing board members, so take your vote. Are you lying to us again? Are you a wolf in sheep's clothing, sir? What's your problem? Take the vote right now. Unmask the kids. You can't do that. Is...I'm just curious. Are you actually running the school, or is the union controlling Tim Throne? Because it seems like you're just going along for the ride. But you don't answer any questions now, except this one, who wasn't even at the last meeting. So we don't trust... The number one value was trust, and integrity was number two, so I don't see that here. That's not happening. You know who the heroes are? The kids. The kids are the heroes. You know, that poor kid Ethan asked for help. It actually went to administration. Too bad we didn't let the law enforcement community know that was already positioned in the school. But you know what? The second my kid showed up without a mask on, you were all over that one. I had emails from administration all over it, all over the masking issue. But gee, kid's got a gun, asked teachers for help. Karen McDonald, the Oakland County prosecutor, laid it out pretty clear. You guys knew. You knew. So this is on you. We don't trust you. Frankly, I don't like you. I think you should resign, and we need to start over because we're taking our schools back, and we're gonna rebuild. And I'm so sorry for the families whose children have suffered and for the ones that have lost their children. It didn't need to happen. It's unfortunate. I'm so sorry.
Heather? T R A J?
Oh, that's her. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a question in regard to the night locks and the training along with the substitutes. When the night locks were installed in 2017, I had talked to a couple people that were in the district that were substituting, and it was brought to my attention as a parent that they were not trained. They were given the information in a booklet prior to coming to the classroom, but they were not trained on the training that all the teachers received. So at that point, we did have some open dialogue. I talked with you, the school board, and that training was supposed to be provided, the same training that was given to teachers was supposed to be provided to any substitute that comes into this building, and it sounds as if that did not happen. So that's my concern for this evening. Thank you.
Anna?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all of our building administration, teachers, counselors, para-educators, secretaries, and janitorial staff who work with our students day in and day out. They are the core and foundation of this district. To prevent another incident like what happened on November 30th from happening ever again, I recommend that all of your staff, from the secretary to the janitor to the administration in your building, build relationships with all students. In working in the past at Bridges High School, the one thing those students stressed to me that was missing at our regular high school was relationships and teachers caring about Our counselors at the secondary level for many years have asked for more counselor positions as they felt their caseloads are too large to address the needs of all students assigned to them. Hopefully, that outcome of this tragic event will be that more counseling positions are posted across the district. In regards to the no backpack, clear backpack, and searching of all student bags, our children are not the perpetrator of this incident. Every day they come into the school building, their belongings are searched and asked to turn their pockets inside out. I ask the board to stop victimizing our children. They are not the ones who committed this crime. When my fourth grader came home from school last Friday, he asked me why his school is searching him and treating him like criminal. My second grader wanted to know why the kids in his school are being punished for someone else's poor choices. And my seventh grader has sadly accepted this as just the way the world is now. Robert Greene once said, "Your fears are a kind of prison that confines you within a limited range of actions. The less you fear, the more power you will have, and the more fully you will live." Right now, this board is living in fear and responding in fear. The pendulum has shifted completely to the opposite end of the spectrum. Every day that we live in fear is a day that Ethan wins. Every day that we shut school down because of some vague threat online, Ethan wins. To live in fear is no way to live. We must continue to live our lives and go through our normal routines. Our children need to get back to their normal routines. That is how Oxford wins. That is how our students win, and that is how we remain Oxford strong. Thank you.
Which one?
Yes.
My comment is just about, I heard a lot of talk about parents being vigilant and all the steps they're taking, but it seems, I was wondering if the board had discussed, once again, additional training to identify a threat and defuse it before it got to the point that it sounds like it did on that tragic day. That's all. Thank you.
Laura?
Hello.
You can pull it down. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. I did wanna express that I definitely agree with the zero tolerance policy, and I'm very happy you guys are doing that and taking this very seriously. But my main concern, and the reason I'm standing here right now, is transparency. We received the email yesterday about the threat to OMS, and there were just, we know that, you know, the K-9 dogs, and there were 25 people who had to clear the buildings, but we really don't know, like, what we were looking for, what the threat actually was, why we needed that much, you know, personnel to come through to clear the building, you know? Are we talking about guns again, or is this like a bomb threat, or what? And basically, in order for us as parents to be able to feel comfortable and trust the administration again, we need full transparency about everything. And I'm not talking about names, but I am talking about, you know, did these threats come from within our district? Did they come from outside? I mean, is this somebody in, like, North Carolina messing with us, or is this coming from with our own community? And are these kids? Or are these, you know, adults doing this? Like, I feel like we just need to know. We just have to have these answers so that we can just... We all want to trust the school district. We all want that. We all wanna be able to trust to bring our kids back to school. We wanna be able to send them. They want to go back to school. They want that, but we need to be comfortable too. You know, kids can be naive, and they wanna be comfortable, and they wanna listen to their teachers and everything, but we as parents need to be the, you know, mama and papa bears and need to be able to be comfortable with sending them there. So obviously, a lot of us are having a hard time with getting that trust, and we just need to know that, we just need all of the information, and I just implore you to make sure that when there is a threat, we just know that, we need to know the details. We need to know what we're dealing with. We need to know how serious it is, and we need to know what the repercussions were as far as, was somebody arrested from this? Was there any punishment? Do we know who it was? Like, we need to know this. We need to know that action is being taken against these people making these threats. It's 'cause it's gotta stop. It's just gotta stop, and there has to be enough of a repercussion so that it, people don't do it anymore. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to just take a second to come to my first of many soon-to-come meetings with you guys. I have two kids in Oxford schools. One goes to OES, one at Daniel Exford. I can tell you, never in my 43 years did I ever expect my eight-year-old child to ask me if me sending her to school, if she was gonna die. She asked me that question the other day, and to tell you my heart broke is an understatement. I'm absolutely devastated, not only for this community, for the people who've lost their children, but, you know, for my own home. My own home right now is not well. My children are not well. I can tell you, we love Oxford. We've moved back to Oxford twice after moving out of state. This was the only place we wanted to move back to. We love this community. I love how strong this community is, but I've seen more than just loss of life since moving back here. This tragedy has shown me the loss of trust, the loss of safety and security in this small town, this town that I never thought anything like this could ever happen in. Sounds like there's a big loss of trust now with the community and our schools. And, you know, the loss of innocence for these children is, I think, the most heartbreaking. These kids will live with this for the rest of their lives. My daughter, my son, will live with this for the rest of their lives. And I guess I'm asking from a, from a father, you know, from a concerned citizen, what are we going to do aside from these security measures I've heard you guys talking about? How are we gonna get back to some normalcy? Speaking strictly as an educator, how are we going to get my kids the education they deserve? Because right now, every time there's a threat called in, they're sent home. Every time there's a threat called in, they don't go to school the next day, and I'm okay with that because I want them safe. But what are we going to do as a school board, as a school district, to ensure that there's not another loss, and that is the loss of their education, one that's rightfully theirs? Thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marcy Benzman. I have avoided getting involved in the mask debate here in the district and then hesitated with the tragic events and loss of life on November 30th, but felt I could ignore it no more. I've seen staff morale diminish while cases of COVID have risen. I am a proud Oxford Wildcat, having spent the last 22 years at Leonard Elementary School in both the kindergarten and first grade class. I had Superintendent Throne's son as a student when he was in first grade. I am a big fan of Leonard and have done my part over the years to support the school and families by writing grants that have brought many things to our school, including a Target grant that paid for kindergarten quests to go on a field trip, and most recently, the Building Healthy Communities Grant, which brought thousands of dollars of physical education equipment that is available school-wide for use. I have my bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Michigan and my master's degree in early childhood education from Oakland University. I have had the good fortune to become friends with many of the hundreds of families whose children have passed through my classroom stores, and this year had the opportunity to have a child of a student I had nearly 20 years ago. We have been wearing masks for 20 months. I've heard many speak of the abuse and mental health damage caused by making children wear a mask for seven hours a day. First, we take mask breaks. I take my students out at least twice a day, and they go out with aides before lunch. I have plenty of disposable masks, thanks to the district, in my room for children who forget or need a clean one and give them out freely. Next, it has been my experience that the children are happy to be in school together and don't have a problem with wearing a mask. They come in excited to learn, give me plenty of hugs, and oftentimes, when they do go home in the afternoon, say to me that they don't wanna go home. They love school. We took a field trip a month ago to the fire department, and I heard students say this was the best day of their life. We celebrated Halloween in our classroom, and the children were so happy to come and celebrate. I have parents share stories with me. One parent said that she saw an overheard son blow on a dandelion one day and say, "I wish I could go to school every day." Another story from a parent, better child asked when the weekend would be over so he could be back in school. Last month, while filling out feathers of what they are thankful for, I had children write their teacher, their friends, their school, and their families. Children are a product of their environment, and this fear and concern for their mental health that parents have mentioned, I just have not seen it. For the present time, it really isn't a lot to ask to listen to the majority of medical experts and our own Oakland County Health Department, who have said students and staff should wear masks to stop the spread of COVID-19 and keep our most vulnerable safe. I have heard the Holocaust brought up and likening this mandate to what happened in Hitler's Germany. As a descendant of family who perished in the concentration camps, that is an insult to their memory and to the millions of others who perished. It is a simple matter to put on a mask to keep those in your community and loved ones safe. In our first days of school, when masks were optional, less than 20% of children were wearing them. This is about caring about your fellow human beings. As I have heard the rabbis at my temple say, actions which help prevent us and others from contracting or communicating the coronavirus, like washing our hands and wearing face masks, staying home if we are sick, our mitzvot, our sacred obligations. Those of us who attend these meetings are just as passionate about how we feel. Many don't come because of concerns over their health with so many not wearing masks, so they email letters to the board. Right is doing all we can to get through this pandemic by protecting the young and old, the vulnerable among us. Students, including those with disabilities and staff, are bus drivers because even losing one bus driver to COVID is too many. So students can continue to learn, and staff can continue to make a difference in the lives of their students and families. In closing, thank you for your time, efforts, and consideration given to keep us safe in these most challenging times. I urge you to continue requiring masks in our classroom until the mandate is lifted. I also thank you personally for providing counseling services for staff, students, and families during these most difficult times. I hope and pray for better days ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. I guess we're allowed to talk about masks now. You'll understand this, Mr. Donnelly. It's a scripture from the Bible, and it says, "When you have something good in the power of your hand to do it, and you don't do it, to him it is sin." Okay? And you all have a huge amount of power in your hands. I agree that there are very strong opposing opinions on masks, but I think tonight, every single child would agree that they're more concerned about dying than they are of being sick with COVID. It's like, well, as long as you're not coughing, it's okay if you're okay with suicide. I mean, it's like, we have this huge disconnect between, like, as was said earlier, this kid, you know, doesn't have a mask on, and they call the parents, and they call the police, and there's all this huge rigamarole because they don't have a mask on, but then something serious happens, and it's like, nah. So I understand that this is hard. And of course, we want anyone who has the need or desire to wear a mask, for sure. I mean, wear a hazmat suit. Nobody is trying to take that right away. And I think we can see that it's really an issue that needs to be addressed. And I would also say, from the lady that spoke previously, the numbers really just don't back up what we're doing here with the masks. There's 83 districts in Michigan, or 83 counties, and just a small sliver of them are still masking, and yet we don't see people dropping dead in every other school district. The numbers just do not back this up, okay? And so tonight, I'm not here to talk about masks. I'm here to talk about mental health, okay? And you all are so concerned about mental health. We're all concerned about mental health because if this isn't the most poignant example of a mental health crisis, that is what we're dealing with here. This was a mental health crisis, and everybody knows it. Okay? So we're talking tonight about mental health. Nothing else really matters. If we had no mental health issues, we wouldn't need clear backpacks. So let's talk about mental health. Parents and professionals have come in to talk to you, month after month after month, giving you... Let me just get back to my notes here, so I say what I need to say. The elephant in the room is the mental health of our students. It should override every other business or housekeeping issue. The topic of mental health has been gaining attention over the last two years as the lockdowns and masks have severely exacerbated the problem that was already so serious. I mean, the numbers are so clear that, you know, suicide attempts and depression are just skyrocketing, and we all know it. And if masks just were one sliver of that, that we could alleviate, and it's within the power of our hands to do that, and everybody who wants to can still wear one? I mean, come on, what are we doing here? This is just, if they could see each other's faces, if they could see each other's smiles, they could heal better. Every person here knows that the masks are harming the kids psychologically. They might recover from COVID, but they will not recover from a school shooting. They will not recover from a suicide attempt. They may not recover from depression. These things are harming them for the rest of their lives, and I'm begging you to reconsider holding a vote that you promised you would hold. And this isn't, I understand the concern about not readdressing something that's been talked about over and over, but this is about mental health. We have to be honest about the effect that it is having on our kids. Anything at all that we can do should be at the top of our list now more than ever. The ball is in your court. You say you care about the mental health of our students, and we can run around the bush, and we can talk about everything else, but if there is something we can do, take the masks off the children that don't, their parents don't want them to wear it anymore. Obviously, everybody would have the choice. We need them to see each other's smiles. We need them to see their expressions of comfort, of grief, of humanity, now more than ever. My daughter is a freshman at Oxford High School. Of course, she was greatly affected by this tragedy. And there's counselors and she's seen the counselors and we've talked and there's all these different remedies in place, but you know what does the biggest healing so far that I've seen, and I think many parents would agree with this? The time that she spends face-to-face with her friends is the most healing time that I have seen. Literally, it changes her when she spends time face-to-face, smiling, laughing, crying with her friends. That is healing. It's healing to her mental health. It brings calmness, it brings relief, and these kids need to see each other's faces. They walk around like this, they see a cloth and a pair of eyes all day long, just a cloth and a pair of eyes and these muffled sounds. We have to stop it.
I'm sorry, I was writing down.
Oh, I'll keep talking.
Heather is the time up?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for your time. I think I've made my point and I will be back here next time. Please take the vote. You could do it tonight.
Thank you. Stephanie, is it Nene?
Yes, it's Nene.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to share my reflection of the soft start last Friday and also our one day that we've had this week. Typically, when I'm here in front of you, I'm here as the IV coordinator at Clear Lake, and so IV is where I go because that's my route. So as an IV district, our learning and teaching is framed by central ideas, statements that are global, timeless, that help our learners find relevance, challenge, and extend their knowledge. In the last 14 days, a central idea that comes from one of our actual third-grade units of inquiry, that has really stood out to me, is that circumstances provide opportunities for action. In the last 14 days, the amount of action, resources, and support from you, the board, the district, community, the world, has been overwhelming. The counselors and mental health resources for students, teachers, families, the therapy dogs in buildings, the additional security in the buildings, has helped all of us take a step forward. It has helped me take a step forward. I myself and my family have utilized these services and we are thankful for them. The soft start on Friday was positive and it felt so good to be in our buildings and with our students and our colleagues. I am a parent in the district with two children, and it was just amazing to hear them come home, to share their excitement, how happy they were to be back there with their teachers and their friends. They loved the therapy dogs. They brought smiles to their faces. They were excited to come on Monday and see the therapy dogs again. I want to also acknowledge the time and the resources and the training for the staff on Thursday that took place. The actions that the teachers took preparing for Friday does not go unnoticed. My children came home, they told me they felt comfortable, they felt welcome, and they felt loved. So thank you for the actions that you are taking to help us all continue to move forward, to keep us safe, all while navigating so many moving parts, feelings, and circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you. John, J-O-N? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Like many, I'm a concerned parent. I have two kids in the district. I'm very grateful and fortunate that I get to see my daughter graduate this spring, but my son is a fourth-grade student. And I think we can all agree that our future leaders are going to be critical, and specifically the superintendent, the next superintendent. I'm surprised to hear that the search is not going to be reopened. I hope my questions are relevant to the existing candidates. How important is crisis management to the next superintendent? How important is executive-level leadership? How important is public relations, communication with the media, and how that superintendent best represents how they communicate with the media in regards to the community? How that superintendent represents our kids? And lastly, I'm surprised, again, that the search isn't going to be reopened. Will there be a survey that will go out to re-ask the community what criteria is important to them for the next superintendent? Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Cooper?
Hello. I hope that this doesn't come off as scattered. We're new to the district. We were OVA last year as we moved in COVID. We were excited about transitioning into in-person this year, and it's been a pretty good experience up to this point. However, the elephant in the room, in my opinion, over the last two weeks, has been our inadequate handling of the situation that was presented at that school on those days leading up to it. The reason why the prosecutor presented the information that she did is because it was grossly negligent. We saw, we saw the signals, somebody dropped the ball, and that resulted in four deaths and putting 1,700 students and faculty at risk. It's not okay. Our values, moving forward from that day, I waited, I waited, and I waited, and the silence was deafening. It was five days before I heard a formal email, and let me tell you, if you guys are looking for an opinion, an email is not a form of communication that we're looking for as parents. These are our children. You come to me, you come to my wife. That's how we communicate. We need a public forum to speak about our children and how we're going to handle this as a community. It feels very unilateral in how you're presenting it to us, and it needs to change. You can't create a plan without having our input, period. And we dropped the ball. We dropped the ball beforehand, and by "we," I'm not necessarily including myself because I take responsibility for my children. I'm not going by the information that the media presented to me, I'm going by what I received in my email, saying that we've recognized that this person needed help in 48 hours. He was recommended to go home, okay? And then you tell me in the email that he didn't need to go home. That contradicts itself a little bit, okay? And I apologize because I'm very nervous, but the fact is clear. He was told that he needed help, he was told that he needed to go home. His parents dictated that they weren't taking him. It wasn't an option. It's not an option. If they don't want to take him, the right people should have been called, period. And I can't help but think about those parents approaching Christmas that can't put their arms around their children. And I, like many other survivors of their students coming home, have guilt about that because I'm a parent and I have four kids in this school district. I feel sad for them because we failed them. And again, by "we," I mean the global "we." We failed them. We talk about the changes and I'm glad that we're looking at what we're going to do, but it's what we didn't do that was the problem, and that will always be the problem. There are a lot of sick children, children in need, that walk the halls. The teachers know this and they present it to the administration, and if it's not handled appropriately, what happens will happen. The values, I was looking, and I'm ashamed to say this, that I didn't know who our principal was, but I didn't. So I jumped on the website and I stumbled upon the values that we've already mentioned tonight. Trust, integrity, commitment, collaboration, honesty, and accountability. And I've seen very little, and it's upsetting. And I need to see that moving forward. That happens with communication. So, Mr. Donnelly, when you said that tonight's not about dialogue, I understand. I follow rules and I understand rules, but there needs to be a dialogue, a verbal communication, for all of us to be able to share where we're at, because I can't get past anger in an email or feeling silenced by not being able to comment on a video because it's not public, because we're not trying to create chaos. I don't want to be a gas thrower in this situation. I want to be of help and part of the solution. You can put all of the things that you want in the school. It's the students walking the halls. They need the counseling. So, just, I know my time is probably approaching, but the fact is, we need more help for them, period. The aesthetics of the football field don't mean a thing if you don't take care of the children. We, and given the opportunity, we need to recognize that we don't listen to experts because, let's be honest, are there experts in school shootings? Should there be? 20 years, we've had experts. We need to be the experts in finding out how to solve this problem and set an example moving forward. We need to do that. Nobody else is going to do that. I have 30 seconds left. I'm upset, and I'm not happy with the way things have been moving forward, and I'm not ready to trust, and I lack the trust right now. Keywords, if I can give you guys one piece of information as I get ready to walk away, don't tell me I have to trust anything. You did that in your video. Trust, trust that we know or we're going to handle it. I don't have to trust anything. You have to earn my trust back, and that's by change.
Thank you. Angela? Is it Angela Reed?
Hello, Mr. Donnelly.
Hello.
Forgive me, I just wrote down a couple of notes. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I felt I probably should. I'm an Oxford High School tennis coach and a substitute teacher. So one of the things that was mentioned tonight was the Alice training. Yes, we are trained. Every summer before we can even attempt to be a substitute, we have to go through the training, so I wanted to set that record straight. Next, I had some questions. The clear backpacks, I think it's a decent idea, but then I thought about the laptop bags, because every student carries a laptop, so then you've got that problem. Then we've got lunchboxes. How are we going to solve that? I don't know what the solution is. I'm just coming up with more questions. I don't know. The GoGuardian, I've used it myself, it's an excellent tool. However, these students don't communicate on GoGuardian. They're on Snapchat, they're on Instagram, and they're on their phones all day long, constantly. I didn't know that myself until I became a substitute teacher. And it's not just the substitutes, it's the regular teachers as well. When I was just a parent, I thought, oh, my kids leave their phones in their lockers. They're not allowed to have them in class. They do, and they're on them all the time. If I had not been a substitute, I wouldn't know that. I wish parents did know that. They might not let their kids take their phones to school.
Please.
I don't know if that's the answer, but again, I don't have any answers. I'm just coming up with more questions that you might want to think about. Finally, the last question I had, and this is just another one. When students are meeting with their counselors, are they taking their masks off to answer questions? I know in counseling myself, I can't begin to trust my counselor or he trusts me if he can't read my face. Just a thought. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela, do you have any others? I have one more. Do you have any more? Do you need to give one to Dan? I thought I saw you. Thank you, Dan. Lori, L-O-R-I. I'm not sure what the last name is. B-O-U-R-G. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. My name's Lori Borjeau. I didn't plan on speaking, but there's been a few things said that... First of all, I heard we're going to zero tolerance. I thought we already were zero tolerance. Let a child bring in a vape, let a girl wear spaghetti straps, zero tolerance. Let a child search ammo. It's his family sport. I don't blame the counselor in this incident. I don't blame the teachers. I blame the administration because you set the pace, you set the expectations for this counselor, for these teachers, on what was to happen there. You let this stay in that one room with that student. Police didn't know about it. You've got a resource officer, he knew nothing. Who sets the example for where these go, where these complaints go? What do you do when you have this sort of incident? You let it stay with the counselor and the dean of students only, not even the principal was told? Then we watch a video, and it says this student didn't have any disciplinary on his file, no discipline on his file, as if that's defense. I see that as your fault. That searching ammo, letters, pictures of shooting, and there's no disciplinary file and that's why you think it's okay? That is not okay. The administration, you guys are the ones who set the expectations for what the school does when they see this. You set that rule, you set the example, you set the tone. Be zero tolerance, we supposedly already were. That's great, it's good to hear, but we should have been on November 12th, when schools should have been shut down. Students like Ethan shouldn't have come in and watched a staff member carry a deer head out of the school. You should know when to go ahead and go online for the day. Don't let the kids come in and see what they think is writing in blood on the school. Don't let a kid come in and search ammo and go back to class. If CPS should be involved and the parents leave, you should have called CPS that instant. This rests on the... This rests on the administration's shoulders. Set the example. I wish you had set it a month ago. You could have saved lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Lesnow?
Hi, guys. I am the mother of a three-year-old preschooler in Oxford Schools. He's out at Leonard. He is in the special education class there with Negan Rayner, and she's amazing. Talking with her and talking with other parents in my shoes, the biggest thing we're worried about with safety protocol is that our special needs kids don't understand what's going on, period. A lot of them have trouble following directions. A lot of our special needs kids, even in the high school grades, are nonverbal, and they need extra guidance and care. I've heard from some special needs parents at the high school level whose kids were just dragged out of the building. They were lifting up fences to get wheelchairs under. I understand that's an extreme circumstance, but I also know that our help for those kids is very short. My son's classroom has had parapros come and go. Their newest one just quit days before the shooting happened. So, I know that my son's teacher has two adults in the classroom to manage 10 kids, most of whom are in diapers, most of whom can't even communicate basic needs. I know I'm the minority for the school district with my son in this position, but when I found out that she receives extra assistance during soft lockdowns only because she can't get extra help to the room, I just wondered, who's going to be there to hold my son's hand and to make him calm? Who's going to be there to help guide these children who don't comprehend danger when there are sirens and lights flashing and all these extra stimuli that they can't process? Like I said, I'm a new parent to the district. It's my second year. I don't have negative things to say. I'm in the process of healing where I feel like we need to learn and move forward, but when we're moving forward, I have yet to hear about what we're doing for our special kids. So, I just want to make sure that they're not forgotten and they're addressed because my biggest thing is that when my son comes home from school, all he can tell me is he had fun on the bus or that he had a cookie. And so, I just want to make sure going forward that this is still a safe place for him too and his classmates. And I just want to make sure that his teachers are getting the help that they need. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Whitney?
Hey, Tom. Thank you for letting me speak. First off, I want to go on the record in support of the board. I know most of you, I mean neighbors, friends. Tim, I do, I know, I mean, no one saw this coming. No one was prepared. I understand the one gentleman's comment on wanting to prioritize some of those things for the superintendent's search. I honestly hope those are secondary concerns in six months. And so, I... I do, I do want, like I said, I support you guys. I do, honestly, I still trust you guys. I'll go on the record and say that. I do think some of these things, Dan, I know you said, throw the kitchen sink at it. I understand that approach, but I do think there is something with making the kids... Like, I don't think any, especially K through eight, very, very few kids associated backpacks with a bad thing until backpacks got banned because of it, right? They're all processing it. I have three kids in the school. They're all processing different ways. I've had some conversations I wish were way down the road, certainly. But I don't, I feel like the clear backpacks are, I mean, honestly, I'm not usually up here talking masks, and I honestly think they're in kind of the same boat. They're a, there's something to make the parents feel safe. I think there's complications with them, and I don't think they're really for the kids. I think it, I don't want our kids to feel like they're going through a TSA line or something. I honestly, I understand that it's, that safety's priority, certainly. I just, there were obviously some red flags, hindsight's 2020, though, but I think policies need to change, certainly. I know you guys know that, and you'll be looking into that. I still trust this board moving forward. Honestly, I would have liked to see it, the masks go for a vote, honestly. But overall, I'm in support, guys. So, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. I'm sorry? Last one, Dan. Last one. Do we have it? Yes. You can come up to the microphone, please. Just wait until I have your card, but please come up. Susan Ballinger?
Yes.
Please.
Well, thank you. I'm a procrastinator sometimes. I sit here and listened and thought about what I wanted to say. The deer head incident, my son called me and told me and sent me a picture and a video and the graffiti, the satanic writing, and the looked like blood. He was very scared and asked if he could leave, and I said, of course. I have twin seniors. And so, I said, of course, you can leave. I'll call the school. You know, he sent me the videos, and I couldn't believe what I saw. It was shocking. It reminded me of The Godfather. It was very scary. And I called the attendance office to have him dismissed, and I said, wow, that was something. How was everything there? What are you talking about? And I said, the incident this morning. What incident? It just seemed very downplayed. So, I said, well, you know, what happened at the school this morning with the satanic messages and the deer head? She said, that was taken care of before school started. And I said, I don't think so. There's a bunch of kids that were watching the deer head get removed. I had wished that my kids didn't see that. It was very scary for a lot of kids. And I know other parents who also called and have their kids sent home. So, I then got transferred to the attendance, another lady, and she also seemed to kind of minimize what was happening, and I was just in shock. So, I finally got an email from the principal, and it could have been Mr. Throne. And I felt it was very lighthearted or, you know, there's some graffiti, you know. It didn't seem very serious, and it was upsetting. I have a master's degree in social work, so I'm a counselor. I don't practice right now. I work in my family's business, but I never contacted the principal before. I never, I don't get involved. I have good kids. They're varsity sports players. They do well in school. They've never been in trouble or disciplined. And I called them, and I was very upset. That I felt was very minimized, what my kids saw and how they felt and the concern, only to see a few days later, then they didn't want to go to school. They knew who this boy was who did this, and they were on his social media accounts, and they saw there was a countdown. He was selling his soul to the devil. It was very scary. They didn't want to go to school. Then my son sent me a picture of a bird's head in a jar of oil in the men's bathroom. He said he reported it, and he was really scared again. And these are big kids, you know? He was, they're big, tough, tough boys, and they were concerned about what they were seeing. I was concerned about what was happening, and I have to tell you, my boys mentioned there's going to be a school shooting because of what they were seeing and hearing. They were very concerned of the environment. The environment was very toxic, and it was overwhelming, the negativity in this boy who was in there, Ethan, you know, what he saw and just other kids, what was swirling around in their heads was concerning. And I just felt like it was very nonchalant. I said to the principal, I said, this wasn't male genitalia or something. That was a prank. Some of the parents I saw on social media were laughing about it. Kids will be kids. No, the boy who did that was very disturbed. And we need to take warning signs, these things, and take them more seriously because I'm afraid for our future and our kids. Somebody mentioned earlier about communicating. I think that's wonderful. Everybody needs to know everybody, not just the athletes and the ones that are football players and the popular kids. We need to look at these younger people, these troubled people, the quiet people, get to know and have dialogue with our students. I hope the best for Oxford. I love Oxford. I know you guys got a tough job to do, and there's some things I'm angry with, and I wish you all the best, and I pray that you have guidance and strength, and I wish you well. And I pray for our community and the four families that lost their kids. It's, I can't imagine. I went to the funerals. It was awful. I don't want to see it anymore. I don't want to see anything. I don't want to see deer heads. I don't want to see birds' heads. I mean, those things never should have happened, and then the shooting. It's tragic. Well, thank you for taking my time and listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. This will close off the unscheduled audience participation. There is not going to be under-scheduled activities. There's no board meeting tomorrow. Superintendent Throne, anything under clarification?
None.
Thank you. Final board comments? I would like to tell you that I heard you. I've got notes on every card. There will be discussions about how to involve you, the community, in the problem solving. I think I'll save everything else for some other time. Anything under other? Board members? Anything under other? All right. Let's consider this meeting adjourned. It is still a great day to be a Wildcat.